To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now please remain standing for a moment of silence for the two victims that were shot on Friday. Thank you. Please have a seat. Roll call.
Karlovic.
Here.
Right here.
Here.
Reese.
Here.
First.
Here. Here. I want to make a motion and add under unfinished business to the agenda, the subject of the Chestnut Street warehouse, 41 Chestnut Street, 2012. Sorry.
Right here?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Roche's?
Yes.
Ister?
Yes.
Karlovic?
Yes. Okay. An executive session was so hard to count to meeting and on July 7th and 10th to discuss personnel matters and where the state. Is there any public comment on agenda items only at this time? Thank you. I make a motion to approve the minutes of June 8th and June 8th and June 22, 2020, and the reports of the fire department, police department, treasurer, engineer, code office, health department, and public works. Do I have a second? Okay.
Right here?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Roche's?
Yes.
Ister?
Yes.
Karlovic?
Yes. So here's the City of Sundbury proclamation. Whereas parks and recreation programs are an integral part of communities throughout this country, including the City of Sundbury, whereas our park and recreation are likely important to establishing and maintaining the quality of life in our communities, ensuring the health of all citizens, and contributing to the economic and environmental building of a community and region. And whereas parks and recreation programs build healthy, active communities that aid in the prevention of chronic disease, provide therapeutic recreation services for those who are mentally or physically disabled, and also improve the mental and emotional health of all citizens. And whereas parks and recreation programs increase a community's economic prosperity through increased property values, expansion on the local tax base, increase in tourism, the attraction and retention of businesses, and crime reduction. And whereas parks and natural recreation areas improve water quality and protect groundwater to prevent flooding, improve the quality of air we breathe, provide vegetative buffers to development, and produce habitat for wildlife. And whereas our parks and natural recreation areas ensure the ecological beauty of our community and provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature. And whereas the City of Sundbury recognizes the benefits derived from parks and recreational services, parks and recreation resources, and now therefore be resolved that I, Kurt Karlovic, a mayor of the City of Sundbury, county of New York, Pennsylvania, on behalf of Sundbury City Council members and citizens, can hereby proclaim the month of July as Park and Recreation Month. I call upon all members of the City of Sundbury and surrounding communities to go out and enjoy your local parks and recreational facilities while practicing safe social distancing. I do make this into a motion. Do I have a second to accept?
Reese?
Yes.
Roche's?
No.
Ister?
Yes.
Karlovic?
Yes.
Right here.
Yes. Justice and right here takes his honoration.
Do you have a comment or deny them?
We're going to do that.
I'm going to do that. I missed it then. Very good. Thank you.
There are a total of eighteen individuals on the honoration list, fifteen of whom are deceased, two over and seeing SSI, and one person is non-revenue. The total amount is $2,233.17. I make a motion. That will be honored.
Roche's?
Yes.
Ister?
Yes.
Karlovic?
Yes.
Right here?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
I also make a motion that we pay invoices of $168,208.62 from the government, $8,207.86 from liquid fuels. But make a motion to pay.
Ister?
Yes.
Karlovic?
Yes.
Right here?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Roche's?
Yes. Can I see the call? See the call?
Hello. You have a couple resolutions on here, I think. Number 23 is the resolution to appoint the section 504 officer, which Jody Acker is your 504 officer. This is just something that you have to do yearly to reappoint Jody as your officer for the CDBG regulation.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Karlovic?
Yes.
Right here?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Roche's?
Yes.
Ister?
Yes.
The second resolution, your number 24, is your fair housing resolution. This is yet another yearly resolution that you do just to state that the city will have fair housing and follow fair housing policies for the city.
Second.
Right here?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Roche's?
Yes.
Ister?
Yes.
Karlovic?
Yes.
Your resolution number 25 is your resolution to apply for the CDBG CARES funding, which is the CDBG CB application.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Reese?
Yes.
Roche's?
Yes.
Ister?
Yes.
Karlovic?
Yes.
Right here?
Yes.
Thank you. And the last thing that I have for you tonight is your CDBG federal fiscal year 2020 project review and selection. So the projects that were discussed at the first public hearing, I had sent out a summary sheet that I hope that you all received. The Cameron Park gazebo was brought up, that there is a deficiency in the ramp. That is something that will need to be addressed, whether it's with your CDBG funding or some other funding, which we'll have to list in the application if you do not choose it to be funded with your CDBG funding. But that was brought up as a 504 concern of the ramp being in need of repair. The, and no, no cost was provided as to what that would cost.
We can take that off the agenda. Find funding in other places to take care of that.
Okay. Can you have someone email me just how we're going to or how you're going to take care of that? Because I have to build that into the application to show that it's being taken care of.
Yes, I will.
Thank you. The Sundbury Wetland Ecological and Educational Park, or SWEAP, was also mentioned. An OPC was provided for $50,000 and then there would be an ER fee and depending. I, I just put an estimated $4,000 in there for your Davis Bacon and Related Acts. That is all based on how many weeks of construction. So I just put an estimated figure in there, which would bring it to about a $58,000 request. That would meet your LMI criteria for low moderate income citywide. So that would be eligible and fundable. Also, a facade program was brought up. I did speak to the DCD Grants Manager about this, and he indicated that this really is not a project to be funded with CDBG funds. CedarCog recognizes that this is a very good project, however, they suggest that they apply for a Keystone Communities Grant. And the city can apply for that, 133.7 Holdings can apply for it, or SRI can apply for it. But it really does not meet the criteria for CDBG funding. It would benefit a business directly and not a LMI resident of the city. The Susquehanna Avenue. What was that? Okay, the Susquehanna Avenue Storm Water and Sewer Separation Project was also brought up. That would be a new and different project from the Reagan Street project. This would require a survey to show that you are meeting LMI residents. And we would also need an, an opinion of probable costs for the application and a work scope to show what the work scope would be. The survey would need to have volunteers from the city and the sewer authority to select and give a list basically of which households and residents are on this line. And then if there's more than 100, it would be a random sampling. If it's less than 100, it will be a full survey. And CedarCog would provide a, we draw up the survey for you, we'd train the volunteers, and we would need to get that survey done before we could have a final hearing to select the project, because we have to make sure it's eligible. A sidewalk project was brought up, and that would be a direct benefit to LMI. So you would need to do a income survey, an intake process for each household when you get to the project to make sure they were, are eligible. You'd also, if you want to put it in the application, need to provide a unit cost for what it would cost to replace a piece of sidewalk, and then an approximate amount of how many pieces of sidewalk will need to be repaired throughout the city. Slumplight was also mentioned.
That one isn't showing on the spreadsheet you're printing out.
Okay, it's on, it might not have printed out on the first page, but it should be on the whole spreadsheet that I sent you, because it was listed on there. Slumplight was also mentioned, and that would be, you would need to determine where the slumplight property or properties were, and you'd also need an opinion of probable cost on that as well.
What was the, what was the cost of the sidewalk one?
I was, I was not provided a cost.
All right. So how does that work? If that project was to be selected?
Well, we'd have to not actually select projects tonight if you wanted to consider that. And we could just table the actual selection and schedule it for the next meeting, and that would give time to come up with a unit cost and an approximate number from the sewer authority of how many households are in that area.
I have a question on the LMI survey. Want you to include one. How many years is that good for? Or does every project have?
Every project has to have one now, unless you're meeting the exact same beneficiaries.
And if that would be the case, how long the survey good for? Reagan Street did that area, well, I'm getting that.
What was that? I'm sorry.
Reagan Street, we did that survey when we applied for the Reagan Street project. And this is phase two of that project.
According to Linda, it would not be phase two, because that project used citywide LMI, and there was no survey done. That she qualified it as citywide, because it was flood mitigation. And it was not an LMI direct beneficiary project.
You're correct.
Are there any others?
No. So on the, on the sidewalk idea, if we decide that we're going to table that one, because we have too much more information to do, to get to, to get the opinion of probable cost, can the council say, you know, kind of table that one for now and not include it for this year?
Well, sure, you don't have to include any of them. This is just a summary of what was discussed. And then you get to select from these projects. It's just that you can only select a project that was discussed at the first public hearing.
Right. So our options right now are to select certain projects. The, the Susquehanna Avenue project would have to be selected pending the completion of the survey and validation, verification of eligibility of the project, correct?
Correct.
But how much money do we, do we have to work with here? I see you have net availability for projects is $251,000. So that one, we take up potentially all of the CDBG entire, entire way?
We choose the amount for each project.
That's what I'm saying. So we, I'm just trying to clarify what our options are, what your options are.
Any amount? You can choose any amount, no amount, you can choose a project, not choose a project. So you can choose multiple projects, split your money up, or?
Well, the quick answer is we do Susquehanna.
193 to 198. 193 to 198. The full.
I would.
Sorry, 193 to 198 will be left after, they should know that, after we did sweep. And then the rest of the Susquehanna. And then if Susquehanna was not eligible, we can come back and revisit that sidewalk project and that one, correct?
Would have been. The whole city was all right.
Well, yeah. Probably would have made a lot of money down there. And, you know. So. So you're established in a, like that. So just to clarify, your motion is to accept $58,000 for sweep, 157, 773, which you directly requested. And the remaining amount to Sundbury to Susquehanna.
What's the total cost to do that? What's the total cost to finish that?
This is just phase one. This, this is just phase one. It'll give a park right there in the center of the park on the property.
$57,000. $57,000.
This, this 57, 773 will complete an entire miniature park on that four and a half acre partial.
That's the entire project. That's a phase of the entire project.
This, this will include off-street parking, water, water fountain for drinking of the public. Redoing the old railroad railroad new maintenance there. There's going to be educational signs on there. At the end of the railroad closest to the wetlands, there'll be a, like a pavilion pushed out into the wetland portion of the city with multiple benches. So of that 57, 773, does that include any type of equipment to maintain that property, or is that just to get that property? To create a park. So who's going to maintain that and what equipment?
$10,000.
Okay, yeah.
Will be cleaned and railroad tracks up area, which is the would have grown up.
Yeah.
A little bit of high resources so far. Everything is being done, making sure maintenance wise, there's no real wood at all, treks, and there's other products out there now. And we want to make it, it's free.
And if it is randomized, as easy as possible, replace it.
I don't know where you're coming from, because he said, I mean, you do cut it off for free, since.
On his own time, right?
Yeah.
I'm just saying with that, obviously, we're going to be taking care of that. I'm just saying, but that's just one more additional cost. Come together with, with things like that.
We're looking into that.
Okay, that was my question.
We want to make sure maintenance wise, every 10, 20 years, we have to place a bunch of the pressure tree. They actually made wall, excuse me, concrete. Walls today, also concrete.
Long-term, right, about the last one. That's it. All right, so we have a motion. I'll say.
Karlovic?
Yes.
Right here?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Roche's?
No.
Ister?
Yes. All right.
Jody, can you clarify, they made a motion to select the project for sweep for 57, 773. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
And the remainder of what we have available to the Susquehanna Avenue project.
So that'd be 193 to 198?
Yes.
Okay, and that's contingent upon the survey, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Uh huh, thank you.
Thank you. All right. June 27th of this year, we received a resignation letter from Officer Marcus Worthey. This is just an admin thing that we have to do right now, making a motion to accept this resignation letter. Senator.
Reese?
Yes.
Roche's?
Yes.
Ister?
Yes.
Karlovic?
Yes.
Right here?
Yes. All right, Chief Mayor, if you want to talk about Officer Doyle.
Officer Aaron Doyle was hired July, I think 8th of last year. He has completed his one year of field training, and he was recommended by the sergeant to be retained as a full-time officer. So I just need to kind of formalize that we accept him as a full-time police officer.
All right, so make this into a formal motion to accept Officer Doyle as a full-time officer.
Roche's?
Yes.
Ister? Karlovic?
Yes.
Right here?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes. All right. So we are already in July, and there's been some discussions started regarding the upcoming budget season for 2021. And the implications that COVID-19 has had on the city and possible next year's budget. So I would like us to discuss kind of what materials we would like from the treasurer officer. Start on this year's budget season earlier than we did for last year. Is there anything specific information that comes with the lighting, the treasury office? I would like to see revenue over the last three to five years versus expense from three to five, just, just as of year-to-date, not as a year whole, but as of year-to-date, just to kind of see where we're off to this year, so we can get an idea of the rest of the year, what to expect as far as what's been coming in. I know the second part of that is sort of just to kind of see if we're behind, if we're not fine, just to set us up for, do at the end of the year, going next year, if that was a better spot.
We are behind about $200,000 right now, but I'll get that information on each of your, in your tomorrow morning, so you can justify where we're at.
We're, we're behind in terms of what budgeted or behind?
Revenue company.
Is that year-over-year?
That's true. This year, we even compared to last year.
We're $200,000 behind this year.
Compared to last year to this year, yes. Chris, we did open the budget, we normally gross between 50, 55. We're hoping about 35, 840, because the period is short. And of course, the situation. Now, we didn't come back and stay up, so we're trying to balance that out, so we'll break even percent. We're going to break even. But, now. Well, the only critical part is we've discussed it today, is ice skating season. Now, Susquehanna, now, which is probably just play at our range. They already canceled football. We don't know about hockey yet. Your sports. So we lose, as in youth hockey, we have full college hockey, they're all setting back home, but right now making decisions. That would be crucial to the income of my budget. About 55 to 60,000. All right, 55 to 60,000. Oh, now boom, in youth hockey. Oh, oh, okay, I heard you. Yes, that's, so we normally gross. 240, 250. Right. So. I grant you, I'm, I'm sorry, well, if you don't have the season, it'll be a lot of savings because of cost of operations and so forth, neighborhood costs and so forth. So when we're being total, we'll probably show out at 240,000, wherever it be gross, okay? Probably showing across the board, 85 to 100, actually profit out of that. So. And also, your income taxes down because people are working, so, you know, instead of getting 40, 50,000 dollars of a pop, it's we, Keystone, we're getting 12, 13. So, you know, that's, that's where basically I see what loss rate is at.
Right, just to tie that on, cancel one of the things we talked about, especially with trading them on, was some real core aspect in the budgeting. You know, actually taking all the numbers, breaking it down, looking at it by department, making sure we're not getting funds properly, and just starting the process, which is what I'm asking for. Be able to have outside of this meeting, actually needing, start a budget meeting.
Yeah, usually start at the beginning of the total, but if you guys want to get one, that's fine, you can let it off, you're up.
All right.
I'm getting, I'll take it tomorrow morning.
And you said you were $200,000 less revenue, right?
It's 200, yeah. Very last year, maybe we had a little more.
And with the information that you have right now, how do you think next year's revenue is going to be, like with the businesses being closer?
Well, you know, with car dealerships, you know, we're not selling cars, that's the check, the change. So when people want to sell product, it's, it's a lot of that burning down tax.
Cars are crazy right now.
So right, right now, they're crazy, too, but there've been a lot of this, you can't get inventory in. So they're selling what's on their lot, but you knew it was a couple of these people here. And I've been talking to dealerships about this stuff. That's what they're telling me.
So I just want to make sure I understand.
Basically, all.
So basically, Kevin, what we budgeted for, even if we're under budget, we're still $200,000 less than the actual revenue to cover our.
In my eyes, what I look back today is.
Okay, thank you.
All you need, seriously, just watch your spending. I mean, I mean, everybody knows we're in a tough period of time right now. Watch what you spend. If you don't need it, don't buy it. If you need it, buy it.
I think it would be nice to be able to forecast it, so we know, you don't have to watch spending, we can plan spend.
You know, you must say forecasting, you know, that's great you can do, but if people aren't working, they're not paying their taxes, they're not paying their income, and they're not going out purchasing. So you can look at all you want, but if it's COVID-19, it's worse, you're not going to give that money in, plain and simple. People who pay taxes right now, people who have money, they have steady income. I mean, we're doing well with that, with taxes, but common sense, not people know about what you're spending, why?
All right, so when you, when you project a deficit in, in revenue, less, less than an ideal performance in revenue, you might want to be able to identify certain line items that you're going to, you're going to decrease by a certain percentage. You could do a peanut butter spread across, so it's decrease all your line items by 3%. So you have to make sure you come in under that. There are line items that are underspent right now, and there's some that might be overspent right now, and I think that that analysis is what, what we're looking for.
The overall budget, why, everybody's doing good. Seriously, spending wise, everybody's doing good.
Exactly, which I think that's all we're asking for.
Yeah, I think they're.
So do you want to schedule a meeting then, a work session, or how do you do that?
Well, let's get the paperwork first, and start to see what we've got, so we can make suggestions in your department.
I don't think it'd be like, should I make it in August? Oh, no, I was, I was thinking like, one month out. Yeah, yeah, like in August or something. So we just plenty of time to get the information and then come back in the month. Maybe on a Monday outside of council, Monday between council meetings.
Okay. We don't see a big difference, though.
And Chief, you'll be prepared for it?
Sure, yeah, I already have my budget.
You're ready to date that.
Yep.
All right. All right, Councilman Roche's?
A wage increase for Paul Russo, going from $10 an hour up to 15. Steve, could you just clarify why and justify that increase to someone to bear why you're getting that?
Paul Russo was hired here to see how things would work out. He is a retired UPS truck driver. Things have worked out incredibly well. He's been with the city for over a year. He is now running equipment. He is a CDL driver again, so he can run all of my big trucks and everything else that I need him to do. He mows grass for us on the bigger mowers. He also pulls wrenches on every single piece of equipment I have down there. He is an invaluable asset to me. I would also mention he is a part-time invaluable asset that does not require benefits, which is a humongous number. He also runs a sweep report. He is one of the most valuable people I have at the shop. The $10 an hour was originally set up to be, let's see what happens. We see what happened, is he's very undervalued. He needs a raise.
Okay, so with the recommendation from the City of Treasurers, since we're $200,000 less, we're in two council meetings previous from this one, I think, but what it's, Councilman Roche's, correct me if I'm incorrect, I'm sure you will. You wanted a pay increase for all members of the department at that time, and it was denied.
That is correct, sir.
Okay. And now you're trying to bring up two of the employees to get a pay raise, and the one so far is a $5 jump. And we should be cutting the costs right now, especially when we're going into the 2021 budget. Please, I'm trying to, I'm trying to, 2021 budget season, to make sure that we're adequately budgeting for the taxpayers' money, as you always say. For me, actually, so I would ask that the council, tonight, this motion that's about to be brought forward, so that we can 490,000 for all the city employees to correct their wages for the 2021 season.
Let me help you. Just me and I just researched it, that, John. Because, just like Steve said, all those other.
Because, just like Steve said, all those other partners, and he's a type of gentleman for five dollars, I know it sounds like a lot, but he's way undervalued at ten dollars, I've been assumed off of that man, but they didn't know his qualifications, apparently. And he deserves it. I know we're in crunch time, but we don't want to lose that man.
You know, and I would say, as I said, he had a lot of valuable cities and a lot of valuable employees in the city, and requesting just to kind of see what everyone can gain as far as in our wages. If he was to jump that high, he would make more than seventy-five, eight percent of our city employees that have been with us for twenty, thirty years. I get, I told you, I get the value of it, I get, I just, I understand that I have one person to department, but until we do a stamp program and until you validate everything, and only fear is jumping high and feeling that these other employees now, the mindset could be, I don't know, but could be, wait a second, this guy's only getting here a year, I've been here twenty, I get what he does inside of that department, but how is what I do not as valuable to my department as what he does for that? That you're paying me, in some cases, four or five dollars less.
You know, the same token, if you're being insurance business, you know what it costs us for insurance and job background.
You're talking about benefits?
Yes.
Well, most of these other people have five hundred in benefits either.
Who needs some of that?
I don't want to bring you to this.
Well, besides that point, also, if this gentleman would need, because of what his current rate is, it would cost us double what his salary is now to hire a full-time, a full-time person to replace him to what he does. So I know it's a big raise, but if he would need to replace him, what cost him, I mean, some of the CBL license, being a mechanic, being able to do what he does, even come on board with the city, it would cost him at eighteen to twenty dollars an hour to even be competitive with anybody else out there.
No, even better.
So is this, is this employee ready to leave if you don't give him the raise?
No, but that there is no such thing as a threat out there, I'm just saying, for someone, it is skill level, it's just something to think about, like, so you can go the way you want and you can discuss it all day long, I'm just saying, I just want to make the mo, others, the argument, say, I just made the motion to give them that increase from ten dollars up to fifty. Right of second.
All right, second. Roche?
No.
Right there?
Yes.
Reese?
No.
Roche?
Yes.
Ice Bear?
Yes.
And then going on to Michael Long.
This was a very inventory.
Okay, thank you. Going on to Michael Long, from fourteen, twenty up to fifteen dollars an hour. Steve, same thing, could you just say why he deserves that and why it must?
Wait, wait, he's going from two.
Fourteen, twenty to fifteen, which is eighty cents.
Okay, so why are you only wanting your eighty cents raise to someone that's been doing over a decade and five-dollar raise to someone?
Well, if you check the last week, well, the last time I brought this up, Mr. Mayor, it was more than that. But when you said before, we should look at our spending, and the same thing goes again for this man. Steve, could you?
Part of what it is, Mr. Mayor, is, is the qualifications. Mike Long does not have a CBL. Mike Long cannot work on equipment, he doesn't have the skill set for it. Okay, so there are certain things that Paul Russo brings to the table that Mike Long does not. What Mike Long brings to the table is a really good service record with me, okay? What he brings to the table is at two o'clock in the morning, when I get a call from nine-one-one center that there's a problem in this town, I can call him up and he's out there with me in a heartbeat. There's a lot what he brings to the table.
Just go ahead, I said last one, I'll give him a raise, this is faster than the pay compared to us in the department. He does work hard in there. I tried to get him a raise last year.
Yes.
And what Steve said about, he is on, literally on call twenty-four hours a day, see, we could get a call right now, Mike will go out and do what he has to do at all hours.
So if he's only worth eighty cents pay raise, because he doesn't have a CBL, and so that's a year for one year, he earns five dollars an hour, but all our employees for every department across the border drastically underpaid.
Hey, I tried to give him more raises last time.
We tried talking to you to get you to wait until the 2021 season, which we just started discussing, so we could have a meeting in one month to formulate a plan for 2021's budget, since we are two hundred thousand dollars less in revenue this year, Councilman.
No, I'm there now, oh, no one's here.
My thought is, I'm raising my voice, but this is very important regarding the, the actions that you're taking through this year.
So I'm, so if that, so if that come up, yeah, and they're showing the paper, okay.
How many other employees are in the Department of Public Works that have a CBL?
Pardon?
How many other employees in the Department of Public Works have a CBL?
Three.
Are they all, who's other, are we going to be getting pay raises for?
Already made more, Mr. Mayor, and I already had them in for pay increase, which was my.
Yes. And so my question is, oh, but.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, those other folks were compensated through their CBL. Through the years, when everyone was down there and so forth.
Who was giving a dollar more now?
They had their CBL, they had the rate that time, so it isn't coming in the backside, he already compensated.
So why did Council approve five dollars now without the raise for this person?
Because he went down through the whole list of the strike workers.
And to replace him would be a lot more than eleven dollars, it'd be up to eighteen to twenty, really costing taxpayers in the board, as you said. And I have another question regarding yours about the budget and getting the act, and so what if it comes back more than what the wages are right now, so that means that what we're going to give them, despite of what our financial status is? So if it comes back, every person in the department should make twenty dollars plus, is that what we're going to pay them then?
That's why during the budget season, we review every line item, item, item. Clearly, yes, stamp program is designed to basically save the budget that you have and how to get it before it's paid out. So it's not designed to say, we're paying these people four dollars an hour plus.
Yeah.
Go find the revenue to do it, to be able to save the revenue that you have and how to get it appropriately. We don't know, but, but I understand the studies on, I know Steve, you put the work in.
Oh, yeah.
And you did what all departments will need to do eventually, but the work assistance of the stamp program is already going to do, gets us there. On the entire city.
Stamp program may not be this year.
It may not, that's a good point, it may not.
So, so to say to end the argument, I made the motion to give Michael Long from fourteen, twenty, fifteen dollars an hour, right of second.
Right there?
Yes.
Reese? Roche?
Yes.
Ice Bear? Carla?
No, I went on the city's record that I'm not saying no to the work ethic of these two employees, because I do know both of these employees and they are hard workers. I'm vote no is expected, should have waited until the budget season. Ms. Ocker, resolution twenty 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 six.
Yes, so you have a copy of the proposed resolution there, and this has to do with the application for the Walk Works grant. Walk Works is a collaboration between the Department, Pennsylvania Department of Health and the University of Pittsburgh. The purpose of the fund is to develop active transportation plans. Our grant requested an amount of eighteen thousand seven hundred dollars, there is no match that goes with that. The comprehensive plan, which was adopted in twenty twelve, did have some plans for, like a cross-city walk, and then we also, of course, have a riverfront that, that also could be continued as a, as a walk or pedestrian pathway. And so what would happen is the consultant would be hired, and then there would be stakeholders invited to the table to talk about what pedestrian and bicycle paths would be needed in the city to connect neighborhoods to businesses and work. And so we are, have this grant application in progress.
Just that you're asking, just now, by our grant writer, or is Steve's not US?
We have been talking with DCNR and CEDOCOP prior to hiring the grant writer, but he's doing this letter, yes.
Second.
Reese?
Yes.
Roche?
Yes.
Ice Bear? Carla? Yes.
Yes.
So this bill number twenty twenty dash thirteen, it's called a declaration of taking. This is, new legislation is not code material, so once it would be, were passed as an ordinance, it would not actually go into the code city summary. It just has to do with a specific property and a small portion of that parcel that needs to be acquired in order to do the Reagan Street project and the Front Street intersection improvement there. We had had, gone through the process of notifying, there were two property owners that needed to be notified by certified mail. We did a appraisal by a certified agent that was able to do this type of appraisal. The, again, we sent out certified letters to advise them of the appraisal. The one property owner accepted that and will go ahead and take the, the money offered at the appraisal and, and transfer the property to us. However, five hundred North Front Street is the turkey-bilt property. It is owned by someone who does not live in the state, and she's been unreachable, and tried multiple attempts for certified mail, and we have, as best we can, confirmed her address. We don't have a phone number, so all of our attempts to contact her have failed. And so now we move into the eminent domain process, and this ordinance would be required in order for the solicitor to pursue eminent domain, file for eminent domain.
Roche?
Yes.
Ice Bear?
Yes.
Carla?
Yes.
Right there?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, bill number twenty twenty dash oh-nine, Fire Department, this is a repeal and replace of ordinance number twenty-six, Fire Department, which was adopted in May, on May twenty-third, nineteen twenty-two. This draft has been coordinated with the Fire Department, it's for Saxon, and Fire Chief have worked on it, and it updates the fire companies that comprise the summary department. It modifies some of the residency qualifications for fire chief. It modifies the appeal process for disciplinary action, and then it would go to the board of representatives for the Fire Department, and it used to go to the council. And it also establishes a requirement for maintenance fund accountability, requesting reports from the Fire Department, treasurer, monthly and annually.
Second then.
Ice Bear?
Yes.
Carla?
Yes.
Right there?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, request for proposal. We sent it out a couple of weeks ago, a request for proposals to four banks, and to, the city is seeking to borrow up to one point one three five million dollars at a thirty-year term, annual payments, and this is for the renovation and construction of the Police Department building. We did only receive, of the four banks that were contacted, we only received one proposal from Northumberland National Bank. You have the full proposal in your packet, with more details in it, I just kind of put up there the specifics on the, on the rate and the, and some options on that. So fixed rate at two point one two for initial five years, option B would be two point five seven for the initial ten years, and then the rate would be renegotiated for additional fixed rate terms. And then there's specifics in there about how the city and the bank negotiate, and if they fail to reach an agreement, it's seventy-five percent of bribe rate. Details are in the document I have before you. So my question is, do you want me to try to get other proposals, or how would you like to proceed on this?
First thing is concerning, the fact we've got nobody else for a million dollars getting back to us, I don't think that makes sense.
I'm only.
First national. Three or four people. First national contacted, they were going to put in a proposal, and I didn't, when I didn't receive it today, I reached out to them, and they said they wouldn't go beyond a fifteen-year term.
I think that means a thirty-year amortization on a two percent loan, pretty good. You have to get that.
Why, why is, why don't these other banks receive them, they're leaving to push some touches after this event, or the morning place out, or multiple banks frustrating? I mean, we just can't look at one bank and say, ah, that's a pretty good, well, it is a good rate, but basically, we shouldn't just take one, one loan like this. And we should be getting, going up to talking to Clint up there at the fault, saying, Clint, why don't we put in a cent? You know, or going over and talking, no, waiting over West, no, say, hey, no. Would you guys like service first, woman, business, power, money, they don't, they don't spend much, you won't get involved. But going talking to these personally, saying, no, say, hey, I think you guys ain't putting a cent, I mean, there's a reason why they're not doing this, and now they don't know why.
Well, what did, what did the RFP ask for exactly? So did it just ask for a loan for this amount, or did it say specifically?
It was thirty years, I think, you, you just said.
That may be, because.
First national said fifteen years at their max, right there, their max is ten years.
No.
No, 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 that's just, just a way.
It's a thirty-year, it's a thirty-year amortization loan. But it's a fix, it's a fixed rate for the first five years, but you can still go over.
Well.
Or you take fixed rate for ten years.
True, it was a no growth rate, and back to square one, but it is a long, that's what you're going to have to do. It's like a five, thirty-year fix, now it's not, I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, I can say, I got my business, I'm ready, so I can afford to.
But I, you know, I can see Kevin's point, I, I don't know why they didn't give us any proposals, and, and he's got other contacts and personal contacts to, try to reach out to.
I would ask, if it doesn't sound here, this is loan, whatever you're wondering, if I have a one point one two five in Northumberland, would be able to draw, if it was like an equity?
The way I read into it today is, you know, borrow the money, make the deal right at five, we have that one point one two five million dollars set there. So we started drawing down on that as the progress with the construction of property itself. So, you know, you're not borrowing one point one two, so I'd say if the project's still running, you might borrow eight point five, if that's all the thing. But that one point, one two five was set there for that terminal, that agreement of that loan. But you don't have to borrow a whole, you're going to borrow what you need and you're going to pay interest. After that five-year initial two point one two, then you go back to the, back to the sitting down table, talking to Tom, or whoever you're talking to, and say, listen, why, you know, why do you want to raise this to us, we're good customers, we have a banking, let's keep it where it's at, and then with the riverfront project, here's the engine, you do the same thing, and he might come back at that time, if everything's one rate, it might be a one point eight, or a one point six, you don't know.
I, I just would be interested, so what, what this says is it's a one-year draw period, meaning that interest accrues only on the.
On the day you sign the contract, it's up.
But what happens to the remaining one point one two five after that?
You take there and that's it.
But if you pay interest on the full one point one two five, if you give it back.
No, you're going to borrow, you borrow, you borrow.
That's not what I'm saying.
Which one are we now, when you want to borrow, what you pay, pay for what you borrow. One point one two five is your cap, that loan.
Your loan amount, yes, so they're giving you a loan for that, so that's what I'm asking. If you go a year and you don't pull a one point one two five, do you pay one year's interest on the full one point one two?
I believe what you, when I got it, I remember, you got it, you borrow, you use eight hundred thousand, that's what you use, pay interest and eight hundred thousand.
And I, I just want to, because that's exactly what it says for one year, that doesn't say what happens after the first year.
And then really, that, that can even issue too, because you don't have long this project, it's going to take you to do this project. Is it really done in a year, or not in a year?
Five months.
When you're looking at next year, you're looking at your debt services, you're already spent for twenty twenty. You've got one last day, but that's in that construction, a few thousand dollars. You've got a forty-five thousand dollar loan coming for the Police Department, for the board itself, and about a fourteen thousand dollar loan for land up there with two or three years left up there to get by the gun sports. That's your hundred thousand dollars in debt services.
But doesn't the one point one two five include refinancing the amount that we just used to purchase the building? Does that hold the one point one two five loaded purchase of the building?
So.
So this doesn't even cover the initial five? We are did a lot of that.
No, I don't, but.
Right, so when I, when I calculated, we had that, that meeting, we calculated out budget for renovation, the architectural engineering costs and all of that, and so one point one two five is a figure of amount, does not include the hundred and twenty five.
As a three-year loan, we got the first one.
So with the one point one two five here, so we take that loan out, can we still get the grant money for different projects? Or if you take this out, you're, you're kind of like, are you already have money for the projects already?
That's the back, so we would continue to pursue grants, and Grant Rider is doing that, and we're also, you know, local foundations are interested in what it is, how it is they can help. So that, the actual amount that we borrow may be much less than that, but that's the cap.
This worst case scenario, that we don't get one penny from anybody. So then what, I guess, then, are we going to be in a hurry? I mean, I'm not saying there isn't a hurry, but, so since we have this money setting, is there a rush, or are we going to get it done away with the grants? Or is this, I'm, I'm just asking.
Because you have to get the grants ahead of spending that money, right? So you can't retrograde, you know.
Yeah, that's what I'm, that's what I'm saying, so.
So we have to push, push, push to get the, get the grants and the support, and then we'll, and then we'll see what we're left with that we have tomorrow.
We can.
I think we need to get personal contacts with different. I think we need to walk in, knock on the door, hey, there's all, there's all, do everything, sit down and say, why don't you, let's live on this, let's show up and see. If it's, if it's a fifteen-year loan, let's ask them, give us our guarantee of fifteen-year loan. Not to mean that, you know, we might be supply homes, but, but.
Well, I don't know, but I, I don't, I, I. Well, I don't know, but I, I don't, I, I don't want to. That appears on the thirty year. No, exactly, what is, what would be the debt service for the thirty years of one point two five?
Chris, in this first line here, it says, we teach you for one year draw period.
Yes.
I think what they're saying is you have one year that we're done, the loan is existing, and from there, you're possibly.
That's, that's what I would wanna just confirm, that they're not at a N P N A three sixty six. Say, okay, you didn't use the four one two five, you're not gonna get drawn interest on that four one one two five in the first year. That's the only thing, and it says that within one year, you only pay interest on the amounts that are outstanding principal. But just, just to be safe, I'd rather say that the remaining is forgiven essentially. It just goes back to the bank.
The one point one two guys, for thirty years, you're gonna pay about a fifty thousand dollars once I pay a year. And if we came back one point five two one two, and I wrote a hundred thousand.
It's probably happening.
Yeah, we could say that, right?
And then Kevin, so what, and so what is the total debt service that we have? I mean, taken out of fifty, so what's left for other debt service?
After this year or?
No, 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 like the same after, the same five year number, or say?
Right now, January will be the last payment of destruction. So you know, you can probably load it back, and you're doing this debt service around that. But you're not gonna be able to do it next year unless one of you budget, be in your own budget, cut costs to make it a line item. And be able to do it with that debt service. Now we're gonna get that we got that finished next year. And so.
All right, so debt service isn't available until twenty twenty two?
Twenty twenty, twenty twenty two, yes.
Unless we find a way to tie the outstanding loan into this loan. This would be pay, pay off.
We only got that one loan payment left.
I'm talking about the new building. Unless you put the new building into this loan, you take the new building out of thirty year amortization and put it on top of this loan. So they'll have one payment of maybe fifty two instead of a forty five and fifty.
So you're longer, you're gonna play double for a building, right? It's on the interest for thirty years, so.
You have to see if you can work it to be able to pay off the principal of the building faster, et cetera. I don't know, you have to be able to see. That's where I sit down with a competition bank saying, we have this loan already, let's get creative, let's see if we can work something to pay the principal off. That's where the advantage of that one too. You know, the people will say, yeah.
We can agree with this now, with Kevin and Mr. Christopher. The world is amazing. And get the answer to that. Well, this is another, Mr. Christopher, you should talk to every bank about these questions.
I agree with that one.
We're questioning, we're questioning going.
I agree though with Kevin that if, if nothing else, if you're, you're.
But let's, so let's, let's find out why these other banks aren't, for the fifteen years, it's like.
Maybe come back in two weeks to see.
They're here to tell us, you don't want a thirty year, ten to fifteen.
No, that's, they want, they want you to fix it for that loan, because then they know that after that, we're gonna be fine. And then who knows? Yeah, or you take a loop in.
Well, if you want your spending or something, that dis, this building should take fifteen years. You're not real listening. I mean, if you watch spending, you do this, you know, buy like more money down the line, or whatever you want or something. But you never know what kind of problems or expectations are gonna come.
Just about interest rates in the future.
Right now, they're bottom on bottom, that two point one two should be at least, or lower at my eyes. Because they're giving money away right now, it's almost in the negative.
You've, you've got, the prime is deceived, so mortgages aren't as, they're low, they're really low, they're not, two point, that's a great rate.
That's what we're paying on construction of two point one two.
Chris, just remember, it's the only interest of areas in country.
Why, it's insurance, everyone's working that. So we're not affording, that's the fear in five years. That's why the, the interest rate is in your pockets a little, you know, as you would assume the debt service starts raising interest rates again. Then hope that you might catch a three percent at that point. Where, I don't know how they reference, but.
Fifteen years at that rate, the cost is, but eighty, eighty eight thousand a year.
Yeah, that's where, that's where at that point, if we found grants, and we could then say, hey, we only need six hundred. Now we may be able to afford fifteen, except they fit in for fifty thousand dollars.
My next question, if we do, say we go out and we put a, we even, the air conditions playing this building itself, and we pay for that out of that loan. If all of a sudden a grant is, a grant reimburses that money for doing that work?
There's a very few grants that are gonna, that are gonna pay for ready to drive costs. Yeah, you're not gonna.
No, I'm just using that for example, Chris. So they're saying, if we go out, we put roof wall, we go out, we buy equipment, we spend our own money, do you grant gonna reimburse us that money back?
No.
So should we wait and see if we have any grants again before we get something like this? Should we save money or what?
That's what you said, so basically, this is, we secure the funding, so we know we have it, and as we're looking for grants. Both things are happening at the exact same time. And then you're going out looking for the grants in your, because we also can't wait too long, because police need something. You know, we, we can't just delay this forever because.
We can't further see the somewhere, like, oh, that, you got one too.
I mean, you said it over, hope the city's in a really good spot.
Right, and it won't be in twenty twenty two, absolutely.
Exactly, yeah. So then all the other debt is all, is already paid off.
Twenty twenty two, yes.
So, I mean, they, they're just being tight for the next two years.
Table this, because you want to look around.
Exactly.
I'm making my own.
So he, we are a.
Yes.
Well, make sure you reach out to.
Yes, and, and if, so there were, there were two to four banks I sent to. So we're gonna circle back to them and find out why they didn't submit a proposal. Plus, I believe Kevin just mentioned a couple of other banks that I over written some of.
Let's, let's, let's.
Okay, that will do. Carlovich?
Yes.
Right here?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Branches?
Yes.
Iceberg?
Can I comment on this real quick? We had a meeting the other day with Stross or Bear, Fitz Stross or about the project. Joe, you can chime in too. You know, if, if everything goes as planned, I said, there's no, no issues. I mean, obviously, there will always be an issue, but I said, if everything goes perfectly, we're looking at nine months, nine month build out. And obviously, right now, the only thing we're doing, we started now, is really getting into the details of what each spot in the building, now that we in the building, that we're kind of looking at. So we're kind of in the early phases of even having to worry about construction funding.
Right, so we have to, there were some adjustments to the floor plan, stuff normal, but happened to planning out building. But then again, no, you don't need as much space there, you need a little more space there. So, so the next step is to finalize the layout again, and then go back to post art or whatever to get the quotes on the furnishings, on the evidence, uh, equipment and things. And those are the things that we're gonna most likely pursue for grant money. Or the outfitting of the community engagement.
And that money, that one point one two five, that's included in that, like our evidence, our new evidence vault stuff, furnishings, camera equipment, I T, all that stuff is included in that. And I can get, that's worst case scenario, we don't get one dollar. Sure, we're gonna get, I've already been approached, you know, by people that say, hey, what can we do? So that, there are things already worse, it's just that, that's the worst case scenario, we don't get one penny from a public entity or anything. So, I mean, I've heard a lot of positive things about doing this.
You know, there's entities out there that assist in funding and things like that, will be able to keep backburners. Knowing the importance of needing this project, but not having the debt service available, potentially maybe looking at funding those first two years through grant funding as well.
And some of the things we had talked about with, you know, another big topic of discussion right now is police reform, is to make it more community oriented, not just, you know, the police itself and the building. So that's, I've heard a lot of angles we're going with, is to try to show them that this is what we're doing to make a new base of policing scenario. I always said, I said it a couple of meetings ago, it's smaller communities that are gonna show the larger communities how it's done. And I think that's part of our future plan is to be more community friendly with our building also.
This is kind of a question going forward to future, and there's always this talk of consolidation. For some reason, if we're consolidating, could that building hold? How many officers, in your opinion, do you think that building can hold if we consolidate, if, if somebody has?
The way, the way we have it laid out, that could easily hold fifteen to twenty officers, easily.
So I, I, I was curious.
Yeah, we, we've always talked about that. We always talked about making sure that it's, it's big enough for expansion for down the road in case we would, because there isn't one officer at our department that's not for consolidation. It's, consolidation is a totally different animal. You could talk to Chief Paul Yost up there in Buffalo Valley, it's a lot of work, and it's a lot of pain too, but we're, we're never opposed to that, because that just, it brings better service to the community also.
So I guess, I mean, I'm not saying down the road once again, so what's the guarantee? I'm not, I'm not against, I'm not gonna say that. So what's the guarantee the consolidation center would be in summary at this?
There's no guarantee.
I'm obviously asking, thinking you don't know.
Yeah, there's no guarantee.
I was gonna, any theory would have some kind of.
It would be substitution, something like that.
Or again, we have a valid, considered. Remark of this course.
Right.
I have to keep in mind, if we do consolidate in the future, the city is somebody's largest municipality in the local area. So the larger, the police department would be, would be here besides.
All right, Ms. Salker, second reading. Thank you. All right, so this is the second reading, bill number twenty twenty dash four, which is the residential rental property ordinance. Is to repeal and replace chapter one thirty four rental property, which was adopted in August thirteenth of two thousand twelve and amended December eleventh, twenty seventeen. We had along the way a work session on the first of June, and then we had the first reading course on the eighth of June. There have been no additional changes incorporated into the, into the draft, into the bill since then. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Doctor. Second.
Right here?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Branches?
Yes.
Iceberg?
Carl.
Yes.
Okay, this is the second reading, bill number twenty twenty dash six, commercial property. This is new legislation. Again, we had the same work session on June first, the first reading was on June eighth. You see the description of the ordinance there, and there have been no additional changes to the, to the bill since the first reading.
Second, this.
Right here?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Branches?
Yes.
Iceberg? Carl.
Yes. I'm gonna jump in here and add it. Uh, yes, so, before you launch, I know a while ago, we had talked about coming to the plan prior to, maybe since September. We know that one of the things that's always been discussed is that building used for parking the All Right Center. There's been a couple of meetings that discussed it, it's been on the table for a long time. I think that's a top of my mind, ten years, I believe. One of the things that's going on right now with S R I is starting the application process for R C A funding from the governor's office. In the two, I believe somewhere around three million dollars. Linda's head over, head corner, and put it on the budget for this year, that money to be available. So to be able to apply for it, you have to start the application process and show that you can do the fifty percent match. What we found out from Linda's office was that one of the things that can't be used as match is property values. So, to come up again with that property, that that could potentially benefit the All Right Center even more now, as being served as a parking lot and as a property that can go forth and match. So unless there's objection, one of the things that with an S R I, I spoke to Jeff's father personally also, I know there was a concern of what happens if the All Right Center is no longer the All Right Center. My request is that we allow Joel to start working up some kind of documentation, not go on actually giving anything to see what our options are, to allow that to go to S R I, as we've talked about for a long time. With the caveat that if it's no longer the All Right Center or not in S R I's name, that it comes back to the city. If the property's not torn down in, let's say, two years, it comes back to the city. If there's no emergency, that that lot is able for people in the neighborhood to be able to park and clear the streets. Streets would be just going on, people are able to park in that lot, to clear the streets. And then also for S R I to establish apartment process within S R I, residents of that neighborhood to be able to use that part of the lot. As they are now, there's probably eighteen, ten cars, maybe that roughly parked there overnight. So we don't wanna make any more inconvenience for them, but just put in some kind of permitting process to allow that to happen. So, yeah, that, that's what my notion is, is to allow Joel to start looking into that process and not going with anybody else can, unless there's a feedback or reflection also.
So that's, I'm just gonna say, I second the motion that Joel.
What I was gonna say is, any nonprofit, someday, a year's number might be bigger nonprofit. So I don't know, but sure. May not be the All Right Center, might be.
Yeah, I think, I see your point, so we can stay with that.
It's a nonprofit.
Kind of shit, yeah.
Branches?
Yes.
Iceberg?
Yes.
Carlovich?
Yes.
Whitehead?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
All right, Ms. Salker, report.
No, we're, we've got one thing from the discussion.
It's not only a.
It's only an objective. Okay, so I understand that there is a fair number of bicycles sitting in the, in the city warehouse, and that there previously, we had done auctions to get rid of them before. And there was also kind of a hanging effort that superintendent of streets, D P W supervisor Steve Lawler's been working on to identify surplus items that could be auctioned off as well. So I would like to discuss what the, what would the council like us to do as far as scheduling the public auction, identifying items to be sold? They try to, I think you're, would like to see us that.
Talking about for a while, you think it's realistic to do like a September auction?
Are they even holding live auctions now? Everything I've been seeing is, every sign I see says it's an online auction. We go online auction, we're not gonna get the draw, and I don't think we're gonna get what it's worth.
I think that I saw.
Yeah, he's doing pretty well with his online auction, because he might be somebody to reach out to for that.
Maybe worth it, see what somebody's doing. I notice they still advertise.
Yeah, I'll make some phone calls.
Okay, if you do it in person, want to maintain, constantly, you do a maintenance.
This couple. Yeah.
I don't know.
And.
We can explore September.
Yeah.
I think September's a good time.
Yeah. Yeah, especially if, if you guys are gonna be pulling that warehouse, I need warehouse space taken down. Because I might leave suckers down there, we have a lot of stuff down in that warehouse, it's gonna have to come out.
And then, if you just do both auctions at the same time, it sets, they have options for auctions.
Yeah, because I have a tremendous amount of stuff down there, so.
See, the only thing I say is, when we sell anything that belongs to the city, we have to make sure to do it, because that's what we sell, so we.
Okay.
Right, so the whole project would be requiring you. Yep, and let me ask, in the meantime, the bicycles itself are twenty dollars a piece, so they all want to.
The city was always leaning into the auctions.
I think we've had some people that, like, we, we'll see somebody, like, they need up a bike that that's their way of, for invitation, I'll send them down to the building or the street, say, go, pick a bike out. Give us whatever you want, or whatever, no get, a lot of times, they'll get twenty bucks just to get rid of it. Bikes that have been sitting down there for a while, just to try to help some of the people out there that brought their bikes. Yeah, that's what we do a lot of times. Take one, get it out.
But that would be getting it away for free. I think you can do that more than you can do selling, because still you have to give, you have to give all the, you know, people, create a bid or anything.
The only, the only thing that I would, I would ask, and I think just to be fair to citizens, is to somehow advertise to the people that this is gonna happen. So that one guy doesn't come down and say, I'll take every bike, and he takes them, and then tries to sell them back and make money.
Oh, we did that, right? We had, we had the auction, and nobody came to the bid, and the one, it's called the bike guy from up in Mifflinburg or something, came up the whole lot. He gives a deal, and he said, all right, here, we just take them, just to get rid of them. Some money he used for parts. Right, right.
No, nothing.
That's, that's two months away, I would rate them, and just reading, that we can consolidate it.
The only thing that I would like to get on record and request on that is, is items that are sold from my department, the proceeds that come from that department need to be reinvested into my apartment, into my department. Is that the process correct?
For auction buyers.
So we can't reinvest that, like, by selling our equipment, like. Like a truck, but say, say if I'm trading in a truck, if I trade in a truck. If I trade in a truck, the value of that truck is essentially staying within my department. So what's the difference if I take equipment and I auction the equipment off, and I utilize that money to purchase other equipment, I'm doing the same essential transaction as trading in a truck.
I'll just make that. Any money that comes into the city, that's what we allocate, is to do analysis of the entire city, we can be allocated where it's most needed. So anybody going into the general fund, would then go out as it's most needed. So I don't think it would be private, as I say. It's the same thing with blood rule and stuff, there's blood rule, it just goes right back to the general fund, and the street departments. Anything we do, it goes back to the general fund, and then we allocate as it's most needed outside of the city.
All right.
City Administrator's report. Two of the things we worked, we just talked about the CD, the right, the CDPG COVID front and the CDPG enhancement, we're coordinating those processes through completion. Uh, project management that I have on Repair AI is the police department building project, we did meet with the architect, and we just kind of discussed that with Chief Herr, um, just a few minutes ago. The Regent Street Flood mitigation, uh, project has gone out to bid, bids are due tentatively July twenty-seventh, but, uh, they're really being an extension because the contractors are having some, uh, difficulties getting all of the information they need to give us an accurate bid. Um, some community outreach, uh, just wanted to mention, we're working complaints received, there were multiple, uh, complaints from the Fourth of July, from before the Fourth of July until now, up to now, even today, someone called me about fireworks. And, um, the, the trash that it's creating in people's properties or people's cars, uh, and the noise and like going on well past eleven o'clock. So, um, I just wanted to make you aware of those.
And just real quick, if I could, and just so you're aware of bringing that topic, um, Chief Herr, this listener myself, we have, I'm researching and discussing how to create this issue.
Excellent. Um, and then I did receive a complaint about speeding on Court Street, that's the eleven hundred block, you know, the, where there's a parking on the right. And, um, did the, the person was asking if they were permitted to put out their own speed books.
No.
They said no, um, but they would like, you know, us to consider what we can do to try to curtail speeding, they said there's, people go to way too fast, we're there with the kids playing, and they're putting out. Um, didn't get a call, uh, prior to the protest or the demonstration on Sunday, there was someone that was concerned about it because of what had happened in the blocks in town, wanted to make sure that people were prepared, so I'm sure Chief Herr was completely well-prepared, and it went out, fought without a problem. Um, and then had a few calls about street signs, which, uh, DPW prepared, and then there was a complaint about, uh, the tax discount period, how we weren't extending that. Then, uh, just the update on codification. Uh, yeah, I'm trying to rattle everything in, um, and get it completed. We had some of the first readings today and second readings today, gets us alone that way, we have in green, those are the ones that have already been adopted and are ready for codification. And then there's still some others there that are hanging out there that we need to tie up. Hoping to complete by the end of September. The street siege management program, that was mentioned this evening, I wanted to let you know that Representative Culver is engaged, and she has been checking with DCP every week to see if she can get that off somebody's desk, get it signed, get off their desk. Uh, as far as community economic development, we've been meeting, uh, about the textile mill, weekly meetings with Limerade and Focus Central PA, there is marketing in progress, they are developing leads, nothing, you know, firm of course yet. Um, the former bakery on North Eleventh Street, the owner developer had reached out to me and, um, we're gonna talk about some of the things that might be beneficial to the city as far as development of that property. And then, uh, the Sunbury Community Partnership Forum will be meeting on July twenty-third at two P M. I've also met with David Rose, he's a Sally Black Urban Design Consultant, uh, he's expressed some interest in some properties, and so continuing those conversations. Also, I attended a webinar on the economic impact of upper floor housing, so this is particularly, uh, of interest, especially to our downtown. And, uh, given some tools that you can use to actually calculate the potential in monetary terms, potential of upper floor housing in downtown areas. So if in the future we're gonna be considering any changes to our zoning, this would probably be some good information to have, uh, when we are considering those kinds of, uh, options. We still have our municipal intern, he's working on the management policy processes, he's, he's been in the basement every day and, uh, sorting through our files and making good, good progress. Um, we're doing the grant management on several projects, but especially the Fourth Street intersection of the traffic lights, and then the audit is still in progress for the twenty nineteen. Council finance, it's gonna be the audit in progress and evaluating the budget revenue projections. And then Department of Public Safety residential inspection has resumed. The mobile food facilities, we've trained the staff, and they're beginning the enforcement for light abatement, they've been out there, um, with DPW and by themselves, if it's somebody doing community service, we're trying to take advantage of some free labor there to get the highways and grass and the trash out of there. Um, we'll be scheduling, since we passed these ordinances this evening, we'll schedule training on the new rental property and commercial property ordinances, and we're gonna have to develop and update the forms for that. Parks and public property, of course, the pool and OPG reopening preparation, that was a lot of work, and I think that, um, employees in, in Parks and Rec, Carl Yoder, Tammy Forbes did a phenomenal job, and Ron Pratt did a phenomenal job getting the pool open. Um, and it is open, and I understand that kind of attendance is a bit lower than previous years, but it's open. OPG opened this past weekend, I didn't know if anybody there was a great. Um, and we want to thank Wise Markets and Chris Reis State Farm for their generous donations to cover the staff wages. Normally those wages are covered by, um, grants and PIA, and, uh, we didn't have money budgeted to be able to pay out of pocket.
Because I want to thank Chris, he told me, and said he had contacted Wise Markets and went up together, it was over five thousand, right? We want to thank you for everything. And it's really slushies of your patients.
Hello. Um, so, uh, also they've been doing the topsoil bill and seating along Front Street, uh, they did install the medication room, this pool of the drop box in the lobby of this building. And, um, we've advertised that on Facebook for people to safely dispose of unneeded unwanted medications and keep them out of the hands of kids and teens. Um, we've also, um, planned for the installation of the pet refuse bag dispenser in Cameron Park, that was donated by Lake and Wire, the coffee shop. And then I understand they're moving on to cleaning up the media and strip there on, uh, Forward Street.
Heard that today or after we talked.
Amazing. And then Department of Streets and Public Improvements, uh, they didn't address for emergency calls, those are things like signs knocked down. Um, they did have to rally and, uh, get after some street sweeping or when that day where they were doing the paving in the heat, and there was travel all over the city streets. And, uh, so they, they rallied to do that, and then as a reimbursement from Hall Baker, they agreed to do some, uh, building, some paving outside the Zamboli more at the break, and so that was a good trade-off. Um.
That was two moves to walk, thanks, sir. Good job. Thank you.
So the Department of Streets of Public Improvement is also, DPW supports a lot of the other departments as well, Police Department, Code Office, Parks and Rec, it takes a team. And so really, the, the good news story is a, is a collaboration among the departments, you know, not operating solely in stove fights, but really collaborating to get, uh, things done that need to be done.
Can we even say something, uh, and, and one more with, um, clean up the grass and stuff like that, I'm looking at the day that, um, Street Magistrate straight to me is seventy people to be in service.
Yeah, you had.
The one.
One. That happens, that would be a, but, but you know.
Yeah, the one that they said.
Yeah, I, I, I have a gentleman down there that is doing wonderful job.
And I think that's, that, there, there's a one-one situation.
Yes, sir, it is.
Eric jumped right on that, so we got everything going there, so you got her out of the way.
No, and Eric's been fantastic this year here on the bikes.
Yeah.
He's, he's been working with us wonderfully, he's been out there busting his ass, he's been doing a good job. Yep.
Steve, tell the funny part, you guys sentenced a grass, was arrested for not cutting.
Not cutting, it's correct. He was, yeah.
It's true justice. These are the streets projects that are ongoing, so we mentioned the Regent Street Flood mitigation going out for bids, the Green Light Go, which is the, um, intersections of Fort and Orange, Reagan and Hacker. G N R Charles is almost finished, they have to get the new poles in, and then they can finish up their work. Municipal Authority and UGI are done with what they needed to do with those intersections, and then Tra Electric, once the new poles get in, we'll be hooking up the new bikes.
Announcements. The City of Sunbury is accepting police officer applications, um, create a hiring eligibility list, submission deadline is August twenty-fourth at four P M. More information is available on the city's website. Next, Art and Heritage two hundred and fifty anniversary committee meeting is July twenty-third, six P M in Cameron Park. The next council meeting is July twenty-seven, twenty twenty, at six fifteen P M, police council chambers in Zoom. And there's one more announcement, I've really been, uh, thinking when this national announcement should be made, and after some discussion with Frank Monzano, uh, the group that had us, and who, regarding people aren't really aware of when political seats are up for reelection, or who's running and so forth. After giving a serious thought, having discussions with my partner, and review current laws, makes today a very heavy day on my heart. I'm saddened to announce that I will not be seeking reelection as mayor for the City of Sunbury in the coming twenty twenty-one election, due to regulations of the Civil Service Act. If I were to seek reelection, I would be terminated or forced to resign from my current employment position. I'm grateful to the community members for electing me their mayor, supporting me along the way, allowing me to serve this great community for four years, which will be at the end of this term. And to the exceptional public servants who have served and continue to serve on my staff. Achievements were the result of their talents and tireless work and dedication for a better Sunbury. Serving as mayor for this great city has truly been an honor and pleasure. There is about a year and a half left in my current term, and I will continue to fight for the rights of all and for the prosperity of our great city for all who live in or visit. You've accomplished so much, and there's still so much more to do. I encourage those who wish to serve in this great city to process your vision for our area and the priorities you will dedicate your attention to. Strive to overcome tolerance and recognize that only for mutual respect, rational discourse, and cooperation can we continue to build a stronger and lasting community while protecting the constitutional rights of all without discrimination. The reason I am bringing this up now is because this coming spring is the primary election for the City of Sunbury, and I would like the information to get out there so that we can see who would like to fill the seat. If anybody has any questions about running for reelection, if they haven't served in office before, my office is open, and I'm willing to sit down and discuss this with anybody. Now it's open to public comment, please.
Mayor, I have two things can I bring up real quick? That's before the public gets into it. Um, I want to bring up, in the police department, we have what we call a clean terminal, which is our live scan and our fingerprint station. Uh, the state this year probably caught up after fifteen years and realized they weren't charging the proper fees for, uh, departments, however, they're not going back and saying, you owe us this money. It's about fifty-two hundred dollars a year, that was not budgeted, but we wiggle room with certain things. Uh, I ended up contacting, uh, the North Thurmond County Commissioners and the I M O One Center, and I basically worked the deal out that we're gonna be able to, I'm gonna be able to save about thirty-five hundred dollars a year on that cost going forward. So this year we're gonna have somewhat of a cost, and there's an initial setup fee that I worked with me folks to get this done. So going down the road, we're not gonna be paying the full fifty-two hundred, we're gonna be probably paying between twelve and fifteen hundred dollars a year, I'm just lowballing it. Uh, so I'm gonna save money for the city going forward, uh, by getting this done with the county, and the Commissioners agreed to, uh, help, help us out. So I thank, uh, the Commissioners for allowing me to do that, to keep this live scan machine, which is a very valuable tool and asset for the police department. The other thing is, uh, the PLCD, we applied for a grant, we were awarded a twenty thousand dollar grant, uh, from now until June of two thousand and twenty-two. It's all on education enforcement of underage drinking, so it's gonna, it's gonna pay for education enforcement, patrols, and equipment for underage drinking and, uh, alcohol violation. So we were awarded that grant, there's some final paperwork that's gotta be done with the President's Office. Um, Officer Terry Ketchum applied for that grant with my blessing and got everything done, so we were awarded that grant, so within the next few years, we'll be using that twenty thousand dollars to help educate, uh, do some enforcement for underage drinking and buy equipment. So I just wanted to give the council and citizens a way of that. Thank you.
Any other public, public comments? Mr. Gimas.
Hello, everybody. I'm going to hear you here, and I'm watching faces, and I'm trying to make a change in the Sunbury for progress and that advancement. Well, nineteen, uh, twenty-two, we have meeting in the library, and I say it would be community colors. When we finish on the library, the chamberwoman Charlie Rose is coming, hey, and he's saying, oh, Christine, uh, wasn't, uh, S R I manager, Christine, I won't remember the last name. Anyway, she was in the S R I. Charlie, hey, and say congratulations, or whatever you say for the, for this town, and tell Christine, tell the senator, what's her name, uh, who resigned, and the, the other one taken the, the place. Diana was the state senator.
Senator Boardroom.
No, no, the, the other one, the representative of the. Marino, yes. Tell the Marino, on the June to start to, to make it the community colors. They approved it, the grants was there, the architect coming, taking the plans in the, in the building, and after, everything traveled. And I asked Mr. Senator Geissi, last time, they were making a big deal, they're saying he visited the elementary school and talked about the kids for education and things. Why he blocked the grants and dismissed the community colors in the Sunbury. And I know a thing, I'm complaining about the newspaper, I was too many times to tell my story, and they don't want to publish. And tomorrow, with your help, I'm gonna make a demonstration outside the door for the, what's her name, Christine Bauer, over there, because too many times I've come over there, and he not let the, the reporters, he tied the heads of the reporters, and they not let me prove. Something happening here. They know one, they know one the progress for this town, they went to eat the carcass, because for everything, the, the Sunbury is dead, and everybody tried to eat up of the carcass, the Sunbury. With forklages and everything. Mr. Rex, last time you visited the building, and I tell them, I've been in the building for ten years, rent free just to pay the taxes, what you say to me? Oh, they fix you building?
You have a, I'll tell you.
Oh, it's all right, if you can, you swear to help the Sunbury, right? You know, you know, that's two ways to start with the, the Sunbury, the honeybees and the termites. I don't know how you are, like a honeybee or like termites to destroy the Sunbury.
I told you that if someone was gonna put in there, it's unsafe, because you thought, if there's a seventy-five thousand dollar wall problem in the city, so you can't just give a person.
Who was responsible for buying, for my investment? Who was responsible for the, for the walls, for the walls destroyed the roof? The city, why the city changed the specters? The ma, the mayor, uh, person, he changed the specter from the scratch, because the, the specter gym shoes were so corrupted, and shiny tables in the building, and, and, and the roof was not correct. And I paid him ten, fifteen thousand dollars, I don't even remember, to bridge special. And I paid him ten fifteen thousand dollars, I don't even remember, to bridge special to prove that. That's the justice. They've taken, they've taken over five years to go on the court. And you know, the lawyers, the contract was saying, oh, the water destroyed the building, not the water. It was he destroyed the roof and all the work coming down destroyed, destroyed the building. So to go on the court, you can't find lawyer here. It's like a wildfire, flame you blow. Nobody tried to hurt me. I wasn't the newspaper to write it through and they don't want it to do it. Why? Bring the red prize on the town here.
I could say that I've seen all the papers, just in the paper, all of a sudden, more than probably any other property.
That's also me. Everybody, you see, I have the building over there. My next neighbor, Kevin, who was a medicine boy, and I complained before the apartment and they said to me to find, to find somebody to look. The medicine boy was there and I called him and I told him, please no parking at the medicine store. All I tell them, what control the tenants? Nobody can find here. Why? What series? She wrote the city. She was in the S R I after Christine. And then all the time I went over there, she said to me, you sell the building, you sell the building for what? She takes the spot to help the Sunbury to improve, not to destroy it. You got the Russia, the FBI to investigate that. Mister, Mister Mayor Percy, I remember the lady got the bar across the street, she's complaining about the Chinese. And said, Mister Mayor, Chinese guy, take a picture, picture, anybody come in my store. And here open the store at six o'clock in the afternoon and the Chinese left one, one o'clock in the. And they go and the mayor say, all right, we changed the rules, no more parking the bus. They destroy the Chinese, the same way they tried to destroy me, but I'm standing like the animal. I stand like the hat gates and I fight through my last breath. And I wanted, Mister Mayor, like you say, you remember the first time when you got me here and you say you tried to destroy my career? You remember that? You complain, you complain about the casting to see here and you say you tried to destroy my career and you were so bad. And you say you hear something, say something, you see something, say something. I say something, I, I tell something, nobody hear me. That's the American dream? No. Please call the FBI to investigate. And tomorrow I want to park in special for my car to demonstrate I don't try to make a domestic terrorism, I'm going to be peacefully. And I asked the very hours, if there is any very hours not tolerated to write it through. Care about the city, not try to destroy it. Educate the people. That's why we got crime in here and kill one the other. You don't want that. The politicians try to make them, how the monkeys make a laugh and they notice them how to survive and alive.
Mr. DeMoss, your grievances are not with this council or the mayor.
No, no.
They care about everything in the city. Now, I know that for a fact, but you're yelling and shouting at the wrong people. They have nothing to do.
Which is possible, Mr. one.
We, the commissioner, you need to go to the county. If there was something to do with community college, it is not with the council and the mayor.
Why the newspaper not write the truth?
But the, but the council has nothing to do with the newspaper. I understand.
I understand that. And I remember you, when you wrote and the white written.
You make your point to them. They can only do so much. If you have a grievance with the paper, you need to go talk to the newspaper, not the council or the mayor. They have nothing to do.
Why the newspaper not, not write my story?
But they have, they have written your story several times. I know.
No, 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 no. What's different? You remember last time they wouldn't like hover like I was in Siberia.
You're arguing, you're not getting anywhere tonight. Okay? If you want to talk, I'll come down personally and talk with you tomorrow about your grievances with the FBI. They cannot have the FBI investigating. That has to come from me or the D A.
And why the mayor changed the rules? Why the mayor changing the rules?
Nobody changing rules. Okay?
I'm Jonathan. I'm just a Stephen Miss.
All right, thank you. We will talk tomorrow.
Read that if you get a chance.
If you want to talk, we'll talk tomorrow. Come see me, please.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Thank you very much.
Next slide.
Sorry.
I'll be through. Thank you so much. I give it to you. You put it up. Thank you. I don't blame you before I blame you, but now you're right.
Sorry, buddy.
All right, next.
Good evening, everyone. It's my first time at a town meeting in a month. My name is Jonathan Carnes. I just recently got my license to power wash in the city of Sunbury. But I wanted to ask you, Mr. Miller, about you wanted to open up the parks and you know, I've seen that you opened up O P G, what it's called. Was there any sanitation done? Is there any rules or regulations that have to be done prior to letting the people or the children go in there for sanitation? And bleaching, there's parks that I'm pretty sure are not being cleaned. I went to the park over at, next to the Y M C A. At Fort Discovery and I helped clean up because my children go there. But I still see that kids bringing slushies and they're dumping it, they're drinking beer cans there. I'm sure you guys are aware that that stuff is going there. But the main reason I'm here is to see if there is any rules to pressure washing any of the playgrounds, parks, sidewalks to the city of Sunbury.
First of all, actually, the situation would work correct. Now playgrounds were wiped down, proper solutions would be a little bit dirty. And power washing, we would do that in house, you know, real power washing.
Okay, what type of sanitation that you guys do? Bleach is not like prior to saving, but there.
I didn't say.
Oh, no, I'm just asking.
Wasn't about bleach, no.
It's a disinfectant solution.
There's alcohol in it.
Okay. Well, I just thought I'd come and fix the house that, you know, also got a business here and, you know, if anyone was interested in it for other reasons.
Power washing bins, that power washing homes.
Pressure washing homes as well as the commercial industry as well. But I have a special pressure washer that does hot water. So it was just up there that it helps sanitize. I use a pressure washer that allows the water to get to a hundred and eighty five to two hundred and twenty five. So anywhere between there kills just the germs, mold, gum off the streets. I did two places in the city of Sunbury that is commercial, O I P and dental office, so that's on record.
Just thought I'd.
Oh, I actually do, but it's better than a business card because people just, you know, do everything with it. So this one for you. I'm not going to try to take everyone's time, but I definitely am sweating. Maybe we can invest in the H C for the back. But. Yeah, it's a hundred dollars on Facebook. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You guys have a great day.
Thank you. Any other audience comments?
I have, I have a complaint. Oh, I'm sorry. Sandra Heine, I live at five twenty four Chestnut Street. You just talked about, you're going to talk about fireworks now that we've already gone through this. On July fourth this year, I made a call to the Sunbury Police Department about fireworks being shot off in the Port Street alley between the five hundred block and Chestnut Street and the Degenstein Library. No response was made. Fireworks were continuous from at least four thirty P M to twelve fifteen A M. They weren't all illegal fireworks. We, some of, most of them were just annoying. It was probably around eight thirty or nine o'clock that the big ones that go up and all of that were starting going on. It basically, it became dangerous. I don't know how wide the alley is there. But it was, the fireworks were being shot off in the middle of Port Street, in the middle of the alley. They literally, this is the ash from at least one of them that went off, landed on my car. There's more. Everybody on the street's car was covered with ash from these things. My house is the newest house on the block. It's a mere ninety six years old. The rest of them are a hundred years and well over. It was a fire hazard. On Monday, I called the police department because nobody showed up. On Monday, I called the police department. I talked to the lady in there and she said, well, they were busy. Well, granted, it's a holiday and law enforcement is busy on holidays. But we're also not even a block and a half. They can see these fireworks going on. There was that group and then behind the American Legion between the corner of the library parking lot. And the American Legion, there were more fireworks going off over there. It's a fire hazard. It's a danger to lives. I called nine one one. There was no response. I talked to the lady and she said, oh, if I was worried about fire, I should call the fire department. I always thought you called the fire department once you had a fire. Okay? Anyway, after the big fireworks went off, they went on to shooting off roman candles, holding them in hand. They were shooting them at the library. I watched them bounce off the walls of the library, hit the windows that are up high and land on the roof. So anyway, I guess it's too late for this year, but I got some questions for you. And this is from talking to people in my neighborhood. The first one, I've got five. The first one is, is it true that the Sunbury Police Department does not respond to nonviolent crimes in my neighborhood as I've been told on several occasions?
About looking up.
Okay. Which part of State Law two thousand seventeen Act forty three does the Sunbury Police Department actually enforce? Because it says even consumer fireworks need to be a hundred and fifty feet away from any occupied building. These, and they weren't. They were less than ten feet.
Going back to your other question, you said that we don't respond to nonviolent crimes in your neighborhood?
Yeah.
No, we respond to violent or nonviolent crime. I can say that word all the time.
Okay. They didn't respond to this one.
I'm pretty sure.
I'm sure it's not, but they were across Market Street, along Seventh Street.
They were over tap.
Across, well, they've been going on for two weeks.
Yep.
Two weeks beforehand and they're the same people. Anyway, she told me to call the fire department. I asked specifically, I asked her specifically about city of Sunbury codes. She said, I'll have to let you talk to an officer. I said, fine. An officer called me back within an hour. I asked him about it and he said, oh, I don't know about fireworks. I work days. Yeah. That was the reply. Oh, do you want the code?
No, I know the code. I know the code and I need to chief sheriff clarify that.
Right here.
Cycle seventy two, we talked about last week, we are working on it.
And I did leave a message for you last Monday and I still have not received.
You are on my list of calls on vacation.
Okay, I figured you were going to call. Okay, I'll give you that. When, when are we supposed to call nine one one for things like this? Just let it go until somebody's house catches on fire. It's an old area of town. One of those houses catches on and it's going to mean the whole block is up in flames.
Chief, prepare me from her own. The issue with the firework calls right now, the way that we're doing it right now. By the time the call is placed, by the time an officer is available to go check out that call, the people who shot off those fireworks are gone. Majority of the time those people are gone or you don't know who actually shot it off. We're in discussions regarding trying to create an ordinance to hold the property owners or the tenant of the property that was shot off that liable for shooting it off or anybody on the property shooting it off. So we are diligently working on.
Yeah, because they were out there from at least, I got home at four thirty. At that point, Port Street was still open, but my neighbors has told me that they were completely blocking Port Street and they couldn't get into their driveway.
And Fourth of July night, I'm with the community. I hear your concerns. Right outside my home on the middle of Arch Street, the big airshow fireworks, people were shooting them off, shooting them off in the middle of Arch Street. They, they, the entire city this year was like over three with the fireworks. So we're going to be sure that this does not happen again next year. Thank you.
Just to make a statement, I am from the Sunbury Eagles Bible three, just before I begin to mine. I mean, Kurt, I understand what you kind of say there about trying to get an ordinance. Someone comes over like a fire off in front of your house. I think that's wrong. Because we have somebody that's in our area, I'm not mentioning no names, that we would do these illegal and put them in front of my house. So if you're saying that if you come to put it in front of my house and I get a fine for that, that's not right. Especially if I'm in bed sleeping. I don't think that ordinance would be very good.
No, so it's just.
No, it's a brainstorm we're looking at.
Right.
One of the things I'm looking at is, first off, we're not going to be able to set them off on city streets, borough areas, alley things like that. So that's going to cover a lot of the streets. The other thing is, is you're the homeowner.
Right.
You're the landlord, you're the homeowner. Again, this is just proof of the law. You're the homeowner, you said, you have somebody setting fireworks off, you're part of it, okay? And if we can't pinpoint who actually is lighting the fireworks up in your home, the homeowner or the landlord is going to get fined. Again, that is some of the brainstorming we're trying to figure out. How do we go about it? If you have nothing to do with it, if somebody process rent is coming from lighting in front of your house, it's not you. It's the person that's lighting it off, that household. And we have witnesses that are going to have to testify to pinpoint that they're the ones that are lighting it off. So if somebody doesn't take ownership, who's lighting it off? They don't get the fine. It's going to be the homeowner, property owner, or the landlord or the tenant. That's who's going to get whacked.
If they're part of it, we're better.
Correct. So those are some of the things we're looking at. Again, just the ordinance that we have now in the books is outdated. We're going to go off the state law and we're going to, we're going to curtail it to what the city.
For where I took that, I mean, I understand what you're trying to do and I appreciate that. But originally I'm here tonight, I mean, I understand we're under the COVID thing. And Sunbury Eagles right now are planning to try to do something for our, like we did last year in August. Last year in August, we had a ban outside and with all this stuff going on, I'm not sure quite of the regulations, what we can and what we cannot do. Last year we had a chicken barbecue. We had one of our patrons that has the machine and he went like to do this again for us. And we want to know if we would be okay to do something like that this year again, even though we have this COVID going on. I've seen that the Goodwill had a chicken barbecue last, last week. It sold four, four hundred hats. They did a great job. Now we're trying to give back to our, our Eagles again this year of doing another chicken barbecue. We want to know, it's going to be either the twenty second of August, a Saturday, or the twenty ninth. We're not quite sure of the, of the day yet. I understand. I guess you can't have a ban playing like we had last year, but if we, if we can, that's what we're going to look into.
So you can view what you did last year. It's just regulations right now are trying to avoid two hundred feet at one time in a location.
Okay.
Have to wear masks. They can't. So the city is not going to stop.
Okay.
The private organizations for most of the, and if these things have one on.
So that's the reason why I came here because I wanted to know if you can do that. Because last year was a pretty good success. And so we want to reach out, put it on T V, put it out in the community. So hopefully everyone will support it. So.
Is it, is, I thought we called correctly. Didn't you ask for some space? Do we want to call for something?
Probably, as of right now, we'll probably do the same thing. We'll reach out to Mary Bruce because they took care of that last year. They blocked off, I think, of Sports Street going down here.
So you do have to apply to the city clerk's office to close that.
Okay, so we'll just have to do the same as we did last.
Are you trying to do that at home?
Yeah, too. We actually, we were going to talk about this Tuesday, but this Tuesday's meeting was canceled, so it probably wouldn't be. So if it's the twenty second and twenty ninth, our next meeting would probably be around the twenty ninth. So it would be a. So if it's the twenty second and twenty ninth, our next meeting would probably be around the twenty ninth. So it would be approximately a month. You know, it would be pretty close to the time.
So my partner's meeting is twenty seven.
They got a paper.
Any other audience comments tonight?
Try online. Online.
Um, no, if you want a far line, that guy sit right at five.
Is there any, I'll make some light. Alright, with that, this meeting is now adjourned.